Time being seven o'clock, I'll call the Monday, August 23rd, 2021 meeting of the Oxford Planning Board to order. Prior to the plan not requiring subdivision approval, I want to let the board know that we got a formal resignation from Dale Mahoda due to ongoing health concerns that he could no longer participate in the board. And we have a nice letter written up to send to Dale, so I'll sign it and pass it down, everyone can sign that. Okay, we do have a plan not requiring subdivision approval, 95 to 97 Leicester Street. I'll turn that portion of the meeting over to our subcommittee chairman, Jeffrey Stafford.
Thank you. The applicant is Ino Babosa. Come on up. Property address is 9597 Leicester Street. Property information is Assessors Map Number Five, Parcel A12.02, zoning district is R2. Proposed number of lots is one. Looks like you're just combining the two lots, they're lots?
Yes, Lot Number Two and Lot Number Three combined together.
Okay, any board, any questions? Yep. Except for the...
Except for the locusts.
Craig, you can say it Craig, you can.
All right, I just want to say that I'm a land surveyor and the locust map on this plan is a joke, all right? I don't mean disrespect, but the locust map, the whole point is to show the lot in respect to roads around it, how far it is from here, if you want it to actually get to it. This locust map shows the lot with the street name in front of it.
That's it.
I mean, I know this board is not going to reject it because I wouldn't expect them to, but it's like, we gotta have some kind of A and R standards. Right?
Just a poorly designed, drawn, incomplete.
I think so.
Going forward with this, if things weren't on this plan, it wouldn't be accepted.
Talk to your engineer.
Yeah, and I mean, we're gonna call, need a motion.
Well, if no one has anything to say, I make a motion that we approve this plan ad submitted for 9597 Leicester Street. And the date of the plan is...
Yeah, I got it ready.
The bottom somewhere there.
I don't see it stamped on there.
No, I don't see it stamped on there either.
Well, the applicant's name is Ino Babosa. Dated 5/26/21. My motion.
We'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Motion carried. All set. I'll turn the meeting back over to Rich.
Thank you. Time being 7:05, we have a public hearing. 275 and 275 R Main Street. Application for special permit and site plan review and approval. Applicant owner Nicholas Coltrain for a two-unit country inn. I'll first read the public hearing notice pursuant to the provisions of Oxford Zoning Bylaw, Chapter Five, Table Two. Uses in a commercial district. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 23rd, 2021 at 7:05 PM in the Oxford Town Hall. Special permit and site plan review application for property at 275 and 275 R Main Street. Oxford mass submitted by Nicholas Coltrain to allow the rear property, 275 R Main Street, to be used for as a two-unit country inn with access, parking and other amenities provided at 275 Main Street located both in the Village Business Zoning District and owned by the applicant by deed recorded with Worcester District Registry of Deeds Book 18416, page 10, and shown on Assessors Map 33C, Parcels D07 and D07.01. Applications can be reviewed in the Town Hall and anyone designed to be here should be here. Any, I'll just first go through and we've got some correspondence. Dated August 13th, 2021, from Kenneth Sellers, the Deputy Police Chief of Town of Oxford. Good morning, I have reviewed the site plan submission for 275 R Main Street, the Taft House. As I see it, this is a slight change of use and will change the occupancy number from previous years when it was an office space. Has an engineered study been done of the building to see if it is capable of handling this use? The change quite possibly changes the type of an alarm system that is required due to the number of patrons staying within the bed and breakfast at one time. The addition of a pull stations within the structure along with emergency lighting possibly would be required under the Massachusetts Comprehensive Fire Codes and NFPA. And then Tony provided a bed and breakfast potential conditions. Ultimately, the ones we have a good set of conditions, we can incorporate them into the future of a bylaw. This is due to the fact that the Town of Oxford doesn't have anything in writing on what a bed and breakfast should and should not have. Number one, the maximum guest capacity shall be limited to no more than six guests in total. Two, no unit shall be rented to any individual guest for a period of more than 30 consecutive days or for a cumulative period of more than 90 days in any calendar year. Three, all parking of guests shall be provided off-street. No overnight guest parking shall be permitted on the street. The applicant shall be required to meet the all applicable requirements, including but not limited to building code and fire safety for both properties. Six, outdoor gatherings and events between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM shall be prohibited. Seven, weekly solid waste disposal service shall be required. Eight, the owner or designee shall maintain a guest and vehicle register for each tenure of each tenant. The registers shall include the name, home address and phone number of the primary tenant, the total number of occupants, vehicle plate number of all vehicles used by the tenants and the date of their rental period. This information shall be provided to town emergency responders upon request. Nine, the owner or designee shall maintain on file with the town, the name, telephone number, mailing address and email address of the contact person responsible for responding to questions and concerns regarding occupancy operation of the bed and breakfast. The contact person or designee must accept calls on a 24-hour basis or respond to inquiries from the a tenant complaintant of the town within 24 hours. For purposes of this condition, a response shall mean an attempt to contact a person or persons that made the inquiry to address their questions or concerns. Ten, the owner or designee shall provide information within the dwelling unit to inform and assist renters in the event of a natural disaster, power outage or other emergency. Required information includes but is not limited to phone numbers, address of emergency responders and utility providers. Eleven, a copy of the town's business certificate shall be located within the bed and breakfast and its location shall be posted within dwelling unit's primary entrance. In addition to this certificate, such information shall include occupancy limits, a phone number and address of the designated contact, a diagram of premises with parking locations and the maximum number of vehicles that can be packed on-site, instructions for garbage disposal, storage and recycling, emergency information and limitations to outdoor gatherings. This information shall be maintained and current at all times. Twelve, shared parking and easement access shall be maintained for 275 R Main Street. Thirteen, the designated contact for the property shall be the initial point of contact for complaints regarding the use of the rental unit. That individual must maintain a written log documenting the nature of all complaints relating to the business, the dates they were received and efforts taken to resolve issues that have been raised. A written log shall be provided to the town upon request. Fourteen, breakfast shall be served only to overnight guests. Fifteen, this approval shall be exercised only by the owner of the property and shall not be transferable without express written permission granted by the Planning Board as a modification of this proposal. Sixteen, the owner shall consent to periodic inspection by the building commissioner, fire chief, Board of Health or any other municipal official as required by the Planning Board in its all the discretion to ensure compliance to this decision. And seventeen, the primary residence of the property owner shall be 275 Main Street. That's all the written correspondence I have at this point. Tony, do you have anything to add?
Mr. Chairman, we were waiting on comments from the Board of Health. I know that they did review the plan two weeks ago. Should the board wish to approve it tonight, further be a condition simply that the Board of Health approve the subject of Board of Health approval. So that's all. Joining tonight too is the applicant, Mr. Cochran.
How you doing, sir?
Great, thank you.
Okay, did you receive a copy of Tony's conditions to our decision?
I did, yes.
That I just read? Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may too, with respect to number one, the applicant requested that the maximum guest occupancy be limited to no more than eight guests in total. I believe four for each unit. And with respect to fire this condition, or I should say condition number five, the applicant shall be required to meet all applicable requirements, including but not limited to building code and life safety. Include further the Mass Comprehensive Fire Code and NFPA. Would recommend that be included in there again, should the board wish to approve this tonight.
We reviewed the last plan, the plan last meeting, and the only thing we asked him to do was to show, he showed four parking spaces, we'd like him to show the eight.
There has not been a revised plan submitted, but certainly... Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm just, just a point, is this considered a country inn or is it bed and breakfast? Is there a difference or not a difference?
So, under our use table, it's falling under country inn. And there is not a definition for country inn. I will also say that all of these conditions again kind of have introduced this. When the time comes, should we have like a short-term rental bylaw? These would be standard items in the bylaw. So we wouldn't have to condition all of this.
May I respond to that? So, the word country inn sounds rather large to me. Whereas my use would be something smaller towards a bed and breakfast type situation. So my hope would be just some guests on the top floor and some guests on the bottom floor. But when I hear a country inn, I think of a larger type venue and I'm looking for something much smaller.
So will there be people that stay there permanently or are they in and out?
They should be in and out. I'm not looking for permanent residents. Something like that, but again, a hotel would be much larger.
A two-week stay, like a two-week or one-week stay type thing, yeah.
Rich, can I ask one question? So, do you have any comments or questions about these that Tony put together? Do you have any problems with any of it?
Not at all.
Well, I'm curious about it because I'm just across the street, so I just wanted to know basically what it's going to be used for. And that everything will be nice and orderly and...
If you might, before you leave, why don't we give her a copy? These are all the conditions we're putting in. So you might want to get a copy of this and you'll be able to see. Okay?
My hope and intention would be for the primary, like, you know, visitor to Oxford, maybe a family that's visiting like Nichols College. They might want to stay just for one night. When I moved here just four months ago, I noticed that there was no type of establishments around here that offered this.
That's correct.
So, again, I'm hoping even two weeks of someone would be too much. I'm hoping that they'll stay one night, get some muffins.
Typically, one or two nights max.
Exactly.
Someone coming up for parent's weekend or something like that for colleges, even the Worcester colleges, it's a little nicer staying in a in a country inn or a bed and breakfast than just staying in the middle of the city.
Anyone else?
I think this is terrific, I think it falls within the master plan. We're trying to get more people downtown, you've got a beautiful piece of property. I'd like to close the public hearing, make a motion.
Okay, it's a second. Second invite Greg. Further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor? Aye. Opposed? Extentions carried unanimously? Okay, who wants to make the motion?
What do you think, it's a good idea, is it workable?
Yes, I think it's workable.
Sure, I have to abstain from this one.
And there won't be any problem with the parking or anything?
No, they gotta stay, gotta have all the parking on-site.
Their plan shows parking for eight spaces, I think they need what, six? So they got more than enough parking, that's required.
Oh, the plan will show eight.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this request for a, what do you call it, a country inn?
Special permit for...
Special permit for a country inn at 275...
Parentheses, bed and breakfast. It satisfies him better that way.
I guess, well, a point, are you gonna have some kind of signage, I would assume?
Yes.
And it's gonna be, what's it gonna be, is it gonna be called something specifically or, you don't know yet?
I would like it to be called bed and breakfast, but if it needs to be called country inn, so be it.
I'll put both.
Okay.
You pick the one you want.
I make a motion that we approve this request for a country inn slash bed and breakfast at 275 R Main Street with the following conditions, that number one, they update the plan showing eight parking spaces, which now shows four. That they agree and adhere to all the conditions laid out by Tony Su, sir, on a memo he sent to us on August 13th, 2021. And they get all the approvals from the necessary other boards, such as the fire and building commission and all that. And that's my motion.
Should we add two-unit bed and breakfast?
Yeah.
What'd you say, up to eight?
Two-unit, well, it says it right here.
What'd you say, up to eight?
We'll go with a two-unit bed and breakfast.
It will only be the rear house that's housing guests.
That's what we're tying you into.
Up to eight guests or something, I think, up to eight guests, is that what, yeah?
Yeah, well, it says, you know what, that's a good point, let's make the change on that list that Tony sent us, that the maximum guest occupancy can be changed from six to eight.
Wasn't there another one too? Was there another change that you talked about, the fire?
The, with respect to NFPA and fire code, I believe that was condition five on there. And then...
That's with the five part.
Yes.
Go through all the forms.
And I did put in there that has to go through all the forms.
So, I've got a question for you. Is the law office still gonna be there?
No.
They're gone, sold out to this gentleman here.
Yeah, she's about five houses up this way now. In the old school.
The legal business isn't doing too well.
I'll second Norm's motion.
Okay, further discussion?
It better feels to be in.
There being none? All those voting in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll be in touch, yes.
Something fell, Mary, I don't know what it was either. Maybe it's your return address receipts or something, I don't know.
Gone forever. Thanks, Ken.
He's going above and beyond the call of duty.
Okay, time being 7:10, we have a continued public hearing, Seven Founders Court. Application for stormwater management and land disturbance permits. We fine?
You're on television.
You are, you are, you'll be fine.
Okay.
Oh, good, that's my media. I'm off in the running highly, have a great day.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we have a we, there was a plan submitted, each got it in your packet, it is a stormwater management report from July 2021. We have an email from DPW dated August 23rd, 2021 to the Planning Board from Jared Duval. Following documents serve as a basis of my review, an email from Michael Scott PE, Landscape Design Collaborative dated August 3rd, 2021. Email from JP Tonelli of Jam Corporation dated August 23rd, 2021. Stormwater management report prepared by Landscape Design Collaborative for Ronald Caldwell Jr. dated July 2021. Existing conditions planned prepared by Landscape Design Collaborative for Brittany Lee Espera and Ronald Caldwell Jr. dated July 20th, 2021. Based on review of the following documentation, I am pleased to offer the following comments. Number one, the stormwater report notes on numerous occasions that Mass DEP does not require single-family residential projects to meet the stormwater standards. While this is true, Oxford's current local bylaw adopted said stormwater standards and requires single-family residents to comply. In this case, as a redevelopment, the standards shall be met to the max extent practicable. In my opinion, the standards have been met to the max extent practicable. However, the following items shall be noted and addressed. A, the applicant shall implement the following measures suggested by his engineer in an email dated August 3rd, 2021. I suggest the pipes be capped and two half-inch diameter holes be drilled in the cap, one at the top and one at the bottom. This will allow the pipe to hold back some water, but still breathe. The caps will maintain, will help retain water in the pipes and stone bedding and increase recharge. Some crushed rocks shall be placed on the new slope below the to allow the water to fall onto an arid surface and disperse. I told Ronald that he'd need to create an overflow at ground grade near his house where the downspouts enter the pipes. That way, should the pipes fill completely, they will overflow onto his lawn, which will further help spread and slow the flow toward the east. Two, the applicant's engineer acknowledged that the newly created slope at the rear of the property is now steeper than pre-developed conditions. Based on the inspection performed today, the slope appears to be well-stabilized with erosion control netting and a good strand of grass. However, there are localized scour and erosion at the outlets of the two roof drain pipes. And he shows pictures of that. The applicant shall repair the silt fence to ensure it is in good working order until the slope is fully stabilized. The DEP, not the, the DPW shall be contacted for an inspection before a permanent removal of the silt fence. Three, although several trees remain on the property line at the toe of the new slope, I cannot comment as to whether the tree buffer has been maintained as the existing limit of trees was unknown. Four, no operations and maintenance plan has been provided. The applicant and/or his engineer shall submit an operations and maintenance plan which includes as a minimum provisions for remedial work in the event of an erosion and scour that may impact the abutter. It shall be noted provisions for the corrective work shall, should an increase in the stormwater runoff impact the abutter. Now, the previous meeting, we had pictures from the abutter showing some erosion going down to his property line. So that's what we got from Jared. How'd you survive Thursday? Thursday's storms were immense. What happened out there?
Yeah, we made it, we made it through. This whole summer has been crazy with storms.
All right, I agree with the man who did your work, he did good work because it's holding up fairly well.
But this is the thing, if there's no maintenance going on to it, then it's gradually gonna get worse and worse and worse as these things happen.
Yeah, is that what they stated at the very end?
Part of, that's part of what they stated, but I mean, it hasn't, they haven't seen anything.
It's actually, it's actually a good year to stabilize your slope because we're not in the middle of a drought which would kill most vegetation. So you've got a lot of vegetation this year, which is good. But that's why an operation and maintenance plan is required because you're gonna have to maintain that slope. And there's gonna be times when it won't have enough water.
Right, and it's continual thing, it's not, it's like, if nothing gets done to it, it's only gonna get worse and worse, I mean...
You're saying maintain the vegetation behind the slope?
I'm saying maintain everything between...
Anything that would cause erosion.
All those recommendations of putting that two-inch in the pipes and stuff like that, putting the gravel down. All that will help, but again, if it's not maintained, it's only gonna get worse. And that's what, there's no maintenance, right now, there's no maintenance going on to that, it's like you just, you hope nothing happens. You know, and some of these, like I said, the storm we had on Thursday, it's just an indication of what can happen.
So basically, we're talking for maintenance, we're talking keeping vegetation, keeping leaves and stuff from like, overgrown? That's basically...
Yeah, and creating that...
Make sure it's functioning.
And creating a rock base underneath the pipe to make sure it doesn't erode further. It is, actually is eroding now as we speak.
Yeah, I mean, that erosion has to be dealt with, it's only gonna get worse. If it's not dealt with, it's gonna get worse, so whether it's...
What the engineer was suggesting was to put some nice crushed stone. Bigger, bigger stones, not like little peacocks, like bigger stones.
Bigger stone.
At both outlets to your roof and also at the base, I believe, too, right? Was that the base too, I thought, no?
That was in the first proposal. That was in the first proposal, um, I don't think he, I don't think he thought that was necessary, um, after, after inspecting and to win his, he did like a fifty-one page report.
Yeah.
Anyone from the public here on this public hearing, uh, abutter, the abutter, did he ever come in? No?
I don't know, I don't know what it even looks like.
Yeah, no, they, they want crushed stone on the, on the slope too.
On the, on the base of the slope?
Underneath the pipes, yeah.
Underneath the pipes?
Yeah, that's all gonna be performed by, oh, underneath the pipes, yes, exactly, yeah.
Yeah. Both pipes, and he wants a cap put on that pipe with a half inch hole drilled in it.
I like the idea of the cap and then when the, when it starts to back up to the house.
It will back it up, it'll keep, keep some of the water in that pipe so that it will leach down underneath your, uh, filth.
Again, I don't know how much damage has been done to the neighbors, I guess, I didn't see the pictures of the erosion on the neighbor's property, but that should be...
So the photos that he sent on the email, um, he was kinda like standing on my property, videoing in, and then he came down and he was like right in front of the mesh netting, but that mesh netting, there's still...
Is on your property?
On my property, it's still probably fifteen feet to the pine line where, where the actual...
So, no, nothing has happened on his property?
I'm, I don't think so, I don't...
Well, he's just, again, he's just aware that this is go, this is a problem that he, he wants addressed. And I applaud you for going and getting an engineer and, and checking this out and...
Oh, yeah, it was, yeah. And like he said, we spoke, we, we haven't spoken in person, but when we spoke on the last Zoom meeting, you know, he didn't mean for this to happen, he just wanted to make sure that he was, his basement wasn't gonna flood, so, putting rocks in there, if we can do what the engineer says, then that's what we're gonna do to make sure it functions right throughout the years.
And again, having a maintenance plan and incorporating that maintenance plan's gonna be extremely important.
Yeah.
And like Rich said, this, this is a great time of year because it's, we've had so much rain that, you know...
I was thinking, I was talking with somebody else, um, an arborist, and they said they, there are trees that will suck a lot of water up. So I might wanna plant some more trees back there on the, on the slope that'll, that might help with water going down the hill. You know, I'm only trying to make the, you know, the yard nicer and, like he said too on the first Zoom meeting, it looks great aesthetically, it looks great, it's just...
Okay, do we have to, do we have to continue this and wait for that operation and maintenance plan?
Well, um, Mr. Chairman, there is, as stated, there's no operations and maintenance plan. The town engineer, DPW director, would like to have a plan to, to review and to his approval.
So you would suggest we continue this till we get that operation and maintenance plan?
What, what would the plan state? Something like every year, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Make sure you water the grass back there?
If your, your engineer appears to be, you know, knowledgeable of stormwater management, it's gotta be a stormwater management operation and maintenance plan.
Yeah.
You don't have a, any detention basin you gotta maintain, but you got, you got a slope surface you gotta maintain.
Yes.
And, uh...
And, and if I may, sometimes, in particular for a project of this size, a technical memo, um, sometimes may suffice for a maintenance plan.
It's nothing that's gonna be filed with anybody other than, put in our files so that we know you're taking care of it.
Right, and whether it's done quarterly, like, you know, it's the same thing, like anything, you know, we get these big rainstorms, yeah, you're gonna go take a look at, see what's going on, just to see, I mean, that's, that's gonna be important.
Exactly, yeah.
Has the pipe been capped and the hole drilled too? Is that done?
Not yet, we haven't done that yet, and...
That should be done.
That's the next step, I'll, I'll call Mike back, which is the engineer, um, and come up with the maintenance plan.
Yeah, get some rocks and fill in that, those gaps, get all that stuff done for our next meeting.
Jam Corporation is coming back and doing everything because it, should've got done this first time.
You make good progress, and you're cooperating with your neighbor, and that's a good...
Yeah.
Okay. All right, entertain a motion to continue this public hearing for September...
Uh, September thirteenth?
Thirteenth at...
Seven oh five?
Seven oh five PM.
I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Roger. Further discussion?
Thirteenth is a Monday, seven oh five PM.
Yep. All those voting in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Carried unanimously. We'll see you on the thirteenth, and hopefully we can, uh, get Jared to say he received his, uh, operation thing, you did the pipe, you have, when you get all that done, you call him up, you call him up and have him go out and do a site visit.
And then does Jared have... So hopefully I can come back with, and, and inspection from Jared?
Yeah.
The caps, the things capped, the maintenance plan written up.
Yeah, then we'll be, then we'll be good to approve your, uh, special... No, your application for stormwater management and land disturbance, we'll be able to officially sign that off.
Perfect.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the time being, uh, seven thirty-five, we have a seven fifteen continued public hearing for Pioneer Drive. Application for special permit and site plan review and approval, applicant BVO LLC for marijuana cultivation facility. And yes, we got the right amount of people this time, okay? We can deal with this. Until eight o'clock, we're gonna, we're gonna be done in ten minutes. Okay, the last time we were officially get, got together, we were discussing the site plan. In particular, uh, odor control, in particular, was your plan good as far as the outside of the building goes? That, that's what I was concerned about because we, we're, we don't have much room to play with on this thing, you won't have much room to play with. So if you're convinced everything you need can go on the roof, it's fine, that's fine.
Ah, yeah, yeah. Definitely. Do you guys need to see the plan again?
No, I don't think so. I think we, that was the only issue we had at the time. I was just concerned that, uh, when all was said and done, you'd, you'd have to put some apparatuses outside the building that you weren't aware of and you don't have any room for them.
Right.
That type of thing, so... But if you're convinced you can do it all, satisfy the, uh, the CCC with your, with your proposal and plan, hey, I'm all set too.
And you still think you're probably about two years out where you're actually up and running, is that a real...
Uh, no, I would, I'd probably say about a year.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
At the most, unless, you know, something unforeseen happens.
I mean, to me, it's very unusual that you have a, a commission that dictates, you know, what kind of things you can have inside and, and your building and what you can and can't have.
Well, they're gonna wanna make sure there's the appropriate, uh, equipment to take care of odor control and all that other stuff, and if that meant you had to put something outside the building, we have a few issues because there isn't any room outside that building.
Right.
All right, now, I... I did see that Tony had a special condition he wanted to put in the, oh, by the way, Craig signed a review of the public hearing evidence affidavit. He missed the meeting of, uh, June twenty eighth, so he maintains our quorum today by signing this affidavit, so we're all set there. For Pioneer Drive, uh, Tony requested that a condition be put in there in the event the planning board receives five or more written complaints from separate entities with respect to odor impacts. In relation to the operation of the establishment, the company shall be required to meet with the board, which may require an additional mitigation measure to be taken at the company's sole expense and to address the specific nature of the complaints. And the background of that goes that the, the signed ho, house, the, the, the how, the home commu, community host agreement has separate households, okay? From a lawyer's point of view, household doesn't mean business, okay? So what Tony was getting, because you're in a business area, if all your neighbors are businesses and they complain, it's the same thing. That's, that's basically what he's saying.
Five or more complaints from any separate entity, you know, that...
So... Anyway, Tony, you gonna have to add?
No, Mr. Chairman, um, again, that condition was added, um, with respect to one of the abutters at an earlier meeting.
Yeah, 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 he was concerned and he should be, I mean, he's got employees too, he, he doesn't want adverse environment over there, so... Maybe when they do community host agreements, they should use the word entities or, you know, residential or commercial entities, you know, that thing.
Quite well taken.
Okay. Anyone from the public wanna be heard on this particular scene? Fire department, all set, Ken? Okay, very good.
All right, I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Roger. Further discussion, there being none, all those voting in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, carried unanimously. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion, we accept this plan dated, I don't got a date.
Still, still, uh, May twenty fourth, I, I mean, uh, that's when we received that, that's it. April, April, yeah. Twenty seventh, did you update the plan at all?
April twenty seventh, two thousand...
And then the plan was revised at the June meeting.
Do you have a date on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we don't seem to have it in the file here.
Right.
It's June eighteenth. You may have been before.
Can you give me one moment? Twenty six, or July twenty six?
July twenty sixth?
Yes, sir.
The plan dated July twenty sixth, two thousand twenty one, uh, with the conditions, uh, proposed by Tony for the, uh... What's that, what's that called there, is this, uh...
It was with respect to odor control.
Odor control, yeah. Any other, uh, conditions?
Also gonna...
Any other conditions, okay?
No, no, I just wanted, again, the, the plan that's on file is what they're gonna be held to, so...
Roger seconded it.
Okay. Any further discussion? If being none, all those voting in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried unanimously.
Goodbye.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Entertained a motion to approve the minutes of August ninth, twenty twenty one.
Make that a motion.
Is there a second? Norman?
Second.
Okay. Any, any issues, discussions, being none, all those voting in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
I'll abstain.
Okay. Three ayes and one, two abstentions. Carrie? Yes, Norman, to answer your question, you can, yeah. Go ahead, sir. Proposed zoning bylaw amendment, marijuana overlay district. Vote to send proposal to the Board of Selectmen and schedule a public hearing for September thirteenth, twenty twenty one.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members, so this is, um, following up from the last meeting, um, simply updating the overlay as we discussed, and basically, what you see in blue is existing. And then in red is the proposed expansion areas. This red down here is, uh, bringing out the southern line another fifty feet. And this area up here, um, is essentially the abutting properties along the stretch of Route twenty from fifty-six and twenty to the French River Crossing Bridge, the abutting properties. Again, this is, um, simply a, a draft, um, following from the last meeting, certainly during the public hearing process, could be further revised.
Are there any residential properties that fall within that newly area, you know?
Yes, there is residential property right at the corner of twenty and fifty-six. It is zoned GB, um, but it is a, a residential, um, house.
So somebody lives, somebody is living there.
Yes, yes. I will also note that, um, there are two properties. If I may, try to zoom in here. Under the existing, um, there were, there were two properties, this property here, which is, um, residential use. And this property here, um, was shown as residential, again, zoned, um, general business, or piece of its own general business.
That's on the other side of Route twenty though, right, so...
Well, that's, that's on the, those...
About the same side?
Lots are on fifty-six, Route fifty-six.
Yeah, here's twenty, and then, and then fifty-six, so, um, behind the gas station.
Basically, Tony's concern was that some lots within the Pioneer Corporate Park didn't fall into that way, they, maybe they will, maybe they would if we gave them a little inkling, give them another fifty feet, so a little, little piece of the lot...
On the other side of the, on the other side of fifty-six, so...
Particularly right over here where, where I have my mouse, um, this is seven Pioneer.
Yeah.
And, um, the, the boundary between the actual boundary of the overlay and property boundary, at least on the map, it was...
So basically, you're just stretching it out a little bit, right?
Seemed pretty close.
Yeah, yeah, just making it fifty feet wide.
Okay, all right.
For the whole length of that side of the street.
For the whole length of that side of the street, okay.
For this side, for this side.
Yeah, and the other one there was incorporating the bank and...
Yeah, I guess...
That old business that's down in that gully down there that goes...
Yeah.
I, I guess that's the only, I mean, again, there's one person's property on there, I mean, I would hate to see someone's, you know, you know, for, you know, whatever you wanna call it, marijuana sales thing went next, right next door to their house. You know, say where the bank, you know, I would hate to see something like that happen.
Certainly, and, and it's important to note that, um, approval would require a special permit.
Yeah.
Um, as, as we did tonight, and, and obviously, I mean, it's required to have an executed HCA prior to come into the board as well.
A quick question, if I could, Rich?
Yeah.
Tony, um, when you create that overlay, um, and let's say the overlay just nicks like a corner of a lot, someone's property or a business's property, does that allow that whole property to be used with that?
Yes, by, by a special permit, um, and that is using our definis, uh, definition section in the bylaw. Um, so the, the lesser of the two, um, zoning districts by a special permit of the board would prevail there.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that, because I thought that was the case.
And, and, um, it was definitely a, a struggle looking at Pioneer Drive, some of the properties, now certainly we could request an applicant to go out and survey to assure the points, but it was difficult, um, when looking at the overlay, subject to interpretation of, of the commissioner.
Quite frankly, this board, this board didn't think Pioneer Corporate Park property would be used for a marijuana cultivation facility at the time.
No, 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 not, not at all.
We were just, like I said, I was waiting for the Chinese restaurant down on the other side of Pioneer Corporate Park that was falling down, that someone would raise and build a, uh, another, uh... Retail establishment there.
Thrust upon this town, we had to find another area to put, put this in, and this made, at the time, it made the most sense to put it over there, but, you know. And I have no problem with stretch, stretching it out, I just have a problem with, you know, when you start encroaching on more residential properties and, that's mainly, and I gotta know there's only one house there, but...
Is that, um, I don't know if anybody room, is that Dave Bigwood's lot? Didn't Dave Bigwood live up in the back there? That's what I thought.
On a private street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Old Cheltenham Road or something like that again?
No, Pine, Pine Drive or something.
Oh, that one, yeah.
The one right down the street from the, uh, Miha or whatever, how you pronounce it.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
So that was the intent, and the intent, what's the intent with the old bank building, well, it's the new bank building on the corner there, is any, is there scuttlebutt going on about that building?
There's, nothing's been filed, um, but it's, we have a host community agreement with another group that originally, they were looking at the former club across the street, which was in the overlay. And then the Route twenty project is showing a turnaround.
They're taking that perimeter domain, they're gonna raise that building, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, really?
Oh, the building needs to be gone.
Well, they're gonna put a, they're gonna put one of their infamous turnarounds.
Roundabout?
Around a, a turnaround for trucks and that to get to the other side of Route twenty.
So in essence, where the building is today, um, that building will be removed, there's still...
There's still plenty of land.
About an acre or so, indeed, indeed.
Kinda hoping they were gonna reopen it as a castle. Kinda hoping they were gonna reopen it as a castle's keep again.
Don't think so.
Bring back the good old days.
Yeah. Anyway, that, that was the, that's the intent, I guess. I...
And, and if I may too, it may be worth mentioning again for, for those that are seeing this for the first time, again, any of these parcels, so take for example this, this back parcel here. Whereas the overlay does touch it, it would require a special permit, again, to, to make this fall under the overlay in its entirety. The same thing would apply over here as well.
Okay.
Um, and with all the other parcels.
So, that, we could, we could put a lot more restrictions in with a special permit.
Well, there's, there's, there's still, there's a, an additional approval that's required from this board, where you, and where you're in that situation where you have two zones that overlap a parcel.
Cause it, like I said, the, the, the bank is already made business waiting to go in there. They have the parking, and they have the building all ready to go, and it, I mean, that could be converted into almost anything pretty quickly.
It can be.
And, and it's interesting, um, as well, Seven Pioneer just recently announced in Worcester Business Journal two weeks ago that a pharmaceutical company from Worcester is, um, will be, will be moving in there. Um, they're, they're not in this realm. They're in, um, uh, assembling, um, packaging medicine, and, um, so I thought that was very interesting and somewhat of a pleasant surprise, uh, to see the, and Seven Pioneer is the Zoink Building. So, it was interesting to see, um, that come about, but, in any event, um, there is some vacancy there. Obviously, that, as, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, the, the Chinese restaurant, and I believe even in some of the, uh, the existing, um, buildings at the corner of Pioneer and twenty, there might be some vacancy there, too.
Yeah.
So...
And how much of it hasn't, like, in the back? I would assume some of it's still undeveloped over there, I would assume, to the-
Back here?
Going, yeah, yes, thank you.
Yes, yes, all, 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 um, undeveloped.
I think some of it has limited access.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, no frontage.
Yeah, these pieces are interesting because they, um...
And then, how, how far down is the ju- the, the junkyard? It's not too far down from there. The old, uh, cop, like, uh...
Yeah.
What was the name of it?
Right across from John Deere, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't extend it that far down.
Yeah.
This parcel is interesting, though, because it does lend itself to, um, this parcel's connected, there's three parcels that are under, um, a Brightwell, um, ownership, which is currently listed, um, for sale, so that it's an interesting, um, area, because you have the zone of GB, residential and industrial amongst those parcels. So-
Rich, that, um, the junkyard is part of that.
It is part, I thought so.
Part of the overlay.
I thought so, yeah. Going further down, yeah.
Okay, yeah, alright. Yeah, I see, I see, that's the start of, uh-
Is it down here?
There's a lot, there's a lot of wetlands.
Yeah, right.
There's a lot of wet, there's a lot of wetlands over there, I know that.
Whatever. Again, our intent was to-
Yeah.
Give people the, a second place they could build another-
Sell their marijuana.
Retail establishment. That was the thing at the time, okay?
Extend it a little longer and create like a, you know, they have an auto mile, we could have like the, the marijuana.
You never, you never know what the future holds.
It's just a, it's a, it's a weird thing for me. I have no problem, except, I just don't like going across fifty, and again, I know it's literally right across the street. I have no problem with, uh, widening it, wa- making it wider.
Little bit of width and that, that length there, that was, I thought you said something was interested in the bank. Thought you said somebody was interested in the bank.
The bank is already made, any business could go in there pretty easily. I mean-
Yeah, I, I-
You could turn that into a Dunkin' Donuts if they wanted to.
Indeed, you know, there's been, over the ye- over the years, geez, over, over the last few months since I've been here, um, a few labs that have been interested in, in that realm and of, of that industry.
So why are we going on that site?
Yeah, well, that's, I guess that's, why, why are we going on that?
That's Jeff's, basically, and he hasn't been here, so I have to, I have to, I'm, I'm listening to him, and he's wondering why we're going across the street.
Yeah, and, and so, just from, from an economic development piece where that parcel's been sitting there idle for, for a while, um, including the bank parcel, and including the industrial parcel, uh, parcel back here as well. Adding those parcels could allow for more opportunity for redevelopment there, for this type of use. But again, it does require a special permit from, from the board, does require an HCA.
That's the, that's the one saving grace.
If it was by right-
I thought there, I thought there was something imminent with the bank. That's why we went across the street, Jeff. That's what I thought was, we were perusing across the street because there was interest there.
Now, certainly taking the corners in its entirety and bringing them across, um, could be a challenge, again, where, where you would be consuming residential properties.
Yeah, 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 that's too much, that's too much. Again, we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna cross fifty-six.
It's a-
You gotta understand, this board didn't wanna cross fifty-six at the time.
Certainly, no, certainly, certainly.
In fact, the more we talk, why are we even doing it? I know you, you, you were concerned about some of the lots within Pioneer Drive, but they're not, they're not looking to do anything over there. In fact, there's a, there's a, there's a lab gonna take over Seven Pioneer.
Indeed, so, so that fifty, that fifty feet clears it up, um, in the overlay. Now, things could change in the future.
Yeah.
You know, tenants could change and so on. Um, important, again, from tying this back to expanding the district, and that, um, those parcels in the red, again, for economic development opportunities.
For marijuana use.
This is it for the marijuana overlay district.
I know, I know.
And we, we are restricting what we put in this.
That requires a special permit.
You know, I, I hated when this was thrust upon us because, you know, and again, it wasn't spot zoning, but the place down on Main Street there was a classic example of spot zoning.
That's spot zoning, but that one particular lot.
Prior to the adoption of anything.
I know.
That's a point to note.
And again, yes, and because they had the first right to have anything too, and all that baloney. And again, to me, this almost not so much spot, cause it is right next to a zoning area, which is fine, but it's almost like, okay, well, we're gonna take this little section because it's really got some nice lots available to people for business that haven't really done anything yet. We're almost like, well, giving these people an opportunity, boom, that's okay, this is why, we'll give you this little nice section of already made lots that are ready to go for it. That's how I look at it.
But it's just like any business, right?
I know.
Yeah.
You're just, you're hung up on the marijuana.
Yes.
Right.
I don't like anything being forced down. I mean, that's, this was forced down the town, not just us, it's forced down this board, everything, so...
Well, the way marijuana s- s- took off in town was, it was more based on what the selectmen did from what the planning board did, okay? We reacted to what the Board of Selectment did.
And, and, and based on, alls we need is five more package stores, and now we'll have to find a third, place for a third one. Now, it's based on the number of package stores, right? How many, how many retail stores you can have, yeah. So we got five more stores selling booze, and we'll have to find another place to put another one.
But they can't be within fifty feet of each other.
Yeah, and it, it's also interesting, too, um, I mentioned earlier about labs, and, and in the, in a, a meeting or so ago, but-
Norm's gone.
For, for that type of, um, for labs even, in this industry, it still requires approvals, um, through, through the CCC and so on, and they must be within the overlay, too. So...
Alright, Jeff, the bottom line is, the bottom line is, we're gonna increase the, the zonal, the overlay district a little bit.
Fine, which is fine.
And if it gives us an opportunity to get something in-
I've said my piece.
One of these buildings, so be it.
I've said my piece.
But there would, you know, there'll certainly be a, a public hearing, um, on this, and, um, and also, you know, it will, it will be noticed, um, as well, so... And again, subject to, subject to further modifications. Certainly don't wanna be in any situation where we're spot zoning.
I've said my piece.
But-
No, no. We've got more than one, one lot there. And we're trying to keep, we're, we're trying to keep residential houses out of it, okay?
Right, well, that's, that, that's why I brought that up.
That's why it looks like that.
Right, that's why, that's why I brought that up, cause I know when the bank went in, there was a lot of issues with the residents living there.
So, the first proposal that Tony had at the last meeting, it actually extended further, um, onto, towards Lester Street, so we took another look at it and chunked it so that it doesn't encompass what is a residential property.
Alright.
Okay. You got enough to put this thing on the warrant?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Entertained a motion to, uh, schedule a public hearing for-
September thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
At seven ten.
At seven ten.
And send a proposal to the board.
And send a, yep. Will you make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, okay, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Roger. Further discussion? There being none. All those voting in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried unanimously. Next one. Proposed zoning bylaw amendment to Chapter Three, Unregistered Vehicles. Vote to send, uh, proposal to the Board of Selectment and schedule a public hearing for September thirteenth, again. And, you missed it last meeting, Jeff. We had a discussion with the, uh, the new, uh, zoning enforcement officer. And, uh, he, he wants to, uh, revise unregistered vehicles, cause supposedly it went in our, uh, zoning bylaw instead of a regular town bylaw, right, Tony? Is that what happened? They get-
That's correct. That's correct.
Which I never thought was in our zoning bylaw, about that, and he wants to address blight, trash, whatnot, buildup in the, in the houses and whatnot.
So, what is the current bylaw for how many unregistered vehicles you can have on your property?
Two.
That's what my-
Yeah, I just wanna, he wants to leave it, but I think he wants it to be enforceable. It wasn't enforceable in the town bylaw.
I mean, there's, there's plenty of properties that have more than two unregistered vehicles.
I didn't get a copy of that, cause I didn't get a package.
Yeah, I didn't get a copy, but, but I'm, I'm all for this, I'm, I'm fine.
I have one here, Rich.
Yeah.
I'm all.
So-
Yes.
I'm all for it.
What you've presented-
Is this it right here?
Yes.
You gave me one in this package.
Oh, okay, yeah, you got it in tonight's package.
I got one. I, I did see it.
Okay, I didn't know, I didn't know if Tony sent it, uh, with the package, cause I didn't get one. I just went-
Tony was away last week.
Oh, that's okay. Tony wasn't here, so we couldn't do that.
I'm all in favor of this one, that's all. I'm, I'm good with it. I am, I am good. I, I understand.
So, basically, this is the same bylaw that's in the, that's in our bylaws.
Needs to be enforced.
We just wanna change it over to the town bylaw.
To the general bylaw.
General bylaw.
So, essentially, we move it-
Chapter seventy-six.
The zoning bylaw to Chapter seventy-six of the general bylaw. Chapter seventy-six of the general bylaw is also the, um, what's currently registration and maintenance of vacant and foreclosed properties. So, the, um, zoning enforcement officer is suggesting that it be revamped to also include property maintenance and registration and maintenance of vacant and foreclosed properties, and will also include unregistered vehicles.
And-
Make that motion.
And we're adding definitions.
So, I believe essentially, the public hearing that the board is going to hold pertaining to the zoning bylaw is to remove it from zoning bylaw.
And put it into general bylaw.
And the Board of Selectmen will have to hold their own public hearing on this Chapter seventy-six?
Yep.
Okay, that makes sense if it does.
I don't believe that any public hearing is required for a general bylaw amendment.
Really? Okay.
So, I'm sure that it will be discussed, but I don't think a public hearing is required on anybody's part to make an amendment to the general bylaw.
We're just moving it.
Alright, entertain a motion to, uh-
Already moved and seconded.
Already, already moved and seconded?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Yeah, I seconded it.
And we're gonna set a pu- we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna set a public hearing for September thirteenth at seven fifteen, just to say we don't want it in our zoning bylaw.
Go ahead, Tom.
Sorry, and, and then we're adding definitions for blight and nuisance.
Uh, no.
No? Okay, so we'll strike that out?
Blight is blight, nuisance is nuisance.
That's pretty well defined.
Yeah, so originally, I talked about-
Right.
Definitions for blight and nuisance within the zoning bylaw, but he's adding them to the general bylaw.
And that must already have definitions in it for blight and nuisance, no?
It do- I don't believe it does, but it, it's proposed.
Add two, yeah, two definitions here. He's adding the definitions, okay. So this meets the approval of the new, uh, zoning enforcement officer? And, and, and the light gray was supposed to be red is the additions, is the additions.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah, I remember that.
The color, colors do-
That's okay.
I remember that, I mean, yeah, I remember that.
Okay. So we're good. All those voting in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried unanimously. Okay, old business, one twenty-five Federal Hill Road. Acceptance of an as-built plan for a commercial building and recommendation for an occupancy permit. Okay, and the only thing I got here was a memo from, uh, the DPW dated August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, the planning board, from Jared Duvall. "I performed an inspection today to determine the project's compliance with the approved plan prepared by WDA Design Group dated August fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, and determined, and to determine if the as-built plan prepared by WDA Design Group dated August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, is representative of the site. My review and inspection focused on the items pertinent to DPW, including but not limited to the site work and stormwater management. Based on my review, it appears that the work completed compli- complies with the approved plan, except for the limit of concrete apron on the west side of the new building. The approved plan shows an apron extending to full width of the building while the apron was only constructed to the front of the bay door. I take no exception with this discrepancy. In my opinion, the work completed generally in accordance with the approved plan and the as-built plan is representative of the project's site. I would also be remiss not to comment on the general drainage characteristics witnessed on site. The site consists of many acres of compacted recycled pavement and a drainage system that only accommodates a fraction of said area. I understand Graves Engineering reviewed the stormwater items and concluded that the existing drainage was able to accommodate the new building. However, I am speculating the site has been expanded upon using recycled pavement over the years to increase storage area. I would like to point out to the applicant and to their engineering that going forward, this sort of expansion may be subject to land disturbance and stormwater management permits." So in other words, the site plan complies, but he didn't, he wasn't highly regarding that the stormwater management would protect all the area that's been made into open space, I guess, parking lots.
That could disturb the area for more storage and stuff.
Rich, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Any chance, I, I understand the concept of an as-built plan, but, and does anybody have the plan that was approved?
It's in the file.
Yes.
Obviously, you can't really read this, but I, it doesn't really show, there's, so there are no catch basins, there were nothing, no basins proposed, they just said that what was, Graves said what was there, which could handle the addition, and I assume that's the addition in the back, this is the red, one-story metal building. It showed the stormwater management.
Yeah.
Is that it? Yeah, the stormwater management, it shows. I mean, I guess the gist of what he's saying is that they've, they've done some leveling out, with, 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 with recycled pavement, stuff like that.
This is the original site plan.
Yes, and I'm also, I'm also pulling it up on the screen here- Yes, and I'm also, I'm also pulling it up on the screen here as well. This was the original site plan as, as you have as well.
Yeah.
Pardon me.
Got the existing conditions, yeah.
Let me just-
If you go to the actual site plan?
It's existing conditions. Here's the site plan.
Yeah, there's the site plan. This site plan doesn't even show any drainage on it.
I've got some frozen film there.
There's a six-inch PVC pipe discharge from what I guess is, yeah, the catch basin. So.
Yeah, there's, there's one siltsack protection at the far lower right corner.
Right. Site plan doesn't show the limit of, the existing limit of compacted crushed asphalt anywhere.
I think what Jared's implying is they've, they've been very liberal on opening up more, more and more space without adding anything in there for stormwater management, assuming it would all drain naturally, I guess. They got a whole lot behind there that, there's a lot of storage and-
There's a CB way out in the back left. No limit of asphalt, no-
Right.
No contours saying where it drains to.
Yeah, and they got the existing surface material to remain typical, which means that can mean anything.
What did you say that?
Uh, the top right there, right where he's pointing, top, top left-hand corner.
Oh, existing surface material to remain.
That can mean anything.
So I assume he said that the whole thing was already pavement, ground-up pavement, and they were slapping a building on it, so there was no change?
I can't go back to two thousand nineteen. I don't remember.
Yeah, just going through the years here on Ariel's, eighteen, this crushed material.
Yeah, that's all that's there.
And it's still existing.
Yeah, they were just storing the boxes up there.
It's, it's this material here.
That's all that material. It's all recycled pavement.
So the, the ASBIL was, excuse me, that was originally submitted, excuse me, was modified to show some, there were some changes to the site. I've seen the photos, it was taken two weeks ago. The concrete pad, as Jared noted, is well extended all along this, at least on the ASBIL was to be shown all along this perimeter here.
Yep.
Unit's been installed, a transformer here. The breezeway was also to have some type of structure to it.
Yeah.
It is, on the ASBIL, it is actually just a, a walkway.
Just a walkway.
And then propane, although wasn't shown on the original approved plan, nor on the original ASBIL plan submitted. The, what you have before you revise shows the actual propane location, and this is photo I took again about two weeks ago showing that. And it is noted on the plan for approval of the fire department. There's notation, the ASBIL plan. I think it's number one on there.
So the original plan didn't show the propane tank?
Did not, did not.
And the fire department has looked at it and they're fine with it?
According to the-
All of a sudden, now there's a propane tank?
According to the engineer. There's notation here.
There's the walkway. Yeah, there's the walkway right there.
Remember, it was to be a covered breezeway, and then the propane-
It says covered breezeway, it is.
What I have, we need to define that. What I have, what I'm showing here was the approved site plan at the time, so the propane is now in this location. Your ASBIL will show the propane and the notation below, and also where the transformer, I believe it's a transformer was installed in this corner, and also the, the large unit right over here. Originally, this was to be one long concrete pad to match the opposite side. Indeed, ballards have been installed around the propane, around the units as well.
But before they get final occupancy, they'll need the final inspection by the fire department.
And everything else, yeah. Okay, so-
I guess we can, we can wait till we have that.
No, we don't need to wait for that. They're looking for us to approve the site plan. And I take, I take Jared's info. He says basically, everything looks okay to him, except he sees a lot of, you know, extended recycled asphalt all over the place. And he wasn't, wasn't sure that they, they have any drainage. I don't know. They, I'm not, he's not saying, don't do anything. He's saying for future reference. They, they were-
Same old story.
They've definitely changed the use of the airport from what the airport was.
Same, things go unchecked for a long time before somebody sees it, because they're, they're up there, they're isolated, they're not like, you can't see them from the road. You can't see that building from the road or anything like that.
Correct. You, you can't.
You don't know what's going on.
Even, even when you enter the property.
Even, yeah, you just got to go back.
And there is no, on the original plan, reference exactly where it fits on the property. It's a very long, large property.
Yeah.
Right, so.
So someone's going back.
That, that's where the building is.
By rights, the thing didn't have much for stormwater management because it had a long runway, and I think they were using the runway for storage. Using the runway to get to the, putting the things on each side for storage.
Yeah. And that's what it was. It was just, they were keeping all the, the trailer, trailer truck beds.
All the containers.
Containers, yeah, all the-
All the hundreds of containers they got in there.
Yeah, that's what was all the purpose of the property.
Is it possible, Tony, in our, in, in your plan sets, that there's one Eagle Leasing or whoever it was, the first, first entity that went there with the trailer trucks? They submitted a plan of the entire site showing edges of pavement and that sort of thing?
It's a possibility.
Yeah, I'd be curious. Just along the lines of our town engineer.
Mm-hmm.
I'd be curious to see, uh-
How much they've changed.
I mean, there is wetlands out there. There's buffer zones, there's-
Yeah, yeah, it's a rebuttal wetlands, right?
Yeah, and it's, it is noted on the plan.
It's all along the left side.
So. Yeah, so the hundred-foot wetland boundary.
That way to the left.
Right along there.
So Craig, are you asking us to provide that to DPW for reference?
Well, I mean, if we can do it, I mean, just maybe, he brought it up and just, I know the whole for future reference thing, but it might be worth a couple minutes trying to find it.
Actually see what they, how much they've done, yeah.
Anyway, we need a motion to approve their site plan.
Okay, I'll, I'll make that a motion.
We got a date on that site plan, Tony?
To approve the ASBIL.
ASBIL, rather.
And, uh, let's see.
Eight seventeen twenty-one.
Eight seventeen twenty-one.
August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Have you seen none? All those voting in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried unanimously. So with us approving the site plan, they can get their occupancy permit, right? Okay.
Unless they pass all their filings.
There you go. Okay, Tony, you got anything else to add?
May, you folks may have received this calendar for two thousand twenty-two.
No, we didn't.
I got one.
I do get one.
It was in my package. You should have one down.
They didn't get a package.
You had a package earlier on.
It's in tonight's packet.
Yeah.
It was in tonight's?
You can have my calendar.
I didn't even notice that. That one's a nice color.
Isn't it right in front of you?
A living color. Yeah, he just gave it to me.
I just gave it to him. I put mine on.
This is about the meeting dates? Yes, yes. Okay. In particular, I don't have any issues doing first and third Mondays. We've had Mondays since day one.
Yeah.
I don't know about what the school committee did to have the meetings on the same night in time that we did, okay? But if it would help the people broadcasting all these meetings, if we could go to the first and the third, I don't have a prob, problem. I always liked Monday nights versus-
Yeah, that's my, that's my, that's my issue.
Okay. Versus any other day, okay? Even though I can't get my packets anymore. Monday just seems to be too close. But if we're not remote, it isn't a problem, okay? Because I can get everything here. So.
Rich, can I just say, um-
Yeah.
Yeah. What are we talking about, changing the meetings?
Yeah, instead of doing the second and the fourth Sunday, Monday, it's the first and the third.
For my purposes, I've had a, I'm in a nicer Columbus council.
Yeah.
And we've always met on Monday, the first Monday of the month, and that would be kind of, it would be kind of bad for me.
Bad for you, okay. Now, well, we're looking for important, okay? Tony, we're going to have to bring this up again. I don't intend, I don't intend to do any changes until the beginning of next year. They, they've gotten this far. They can live with it the rest of the year like this.
What was the purpose of change? Who, who wanted us to change?
School committee.
It was, it was to accommodate public access.
Public access for what?
YouTube, YouTube broadcasting.
So it can be brought, so it can be seen on whatever, the recording, whatever, yeah.
And staffing.
Staffing, they gotta, they gotta record two meetings at the same time then.
Yeah.
So the school committee meets the same time as the planning board.
We should have a full board to decide this too.
But it's been going on for years, right?
Yeah. It has been.
Right?
Yeah, it's been going on for years.
Yes, yeah.
But-
Previously-
But the previous-
We had the staff to cover, but the former office of public access is disbanded.
Right.
So now we have another entity doing our public broadcasting, and they don't really have a budget right now, so.
We should still have a full board to discuss this.
Is it?
We should have a full board, everyone's-
Yeah, we're going to, while we, you know, right, uh, we'll do that. We'll do that. I just think the first Monday's bad anyway because there's a lot of holidays that fall on Mondays, especially the first Mondays.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll either have to move those meetings anyway, which would be a pain for anybody, even the broadcasting people, you know, so. I, I bet they-
Midnight, first and third, or the first Monday of every month is Board of Health, and they usually start at five, so we'd be wrapped up by seven. But I know some planning board members like to get here earlier and-
And again, how much of it, say, we just did one Monday a month. I mean, sometimes, you know, we've done this before where not that much going on. I mean, it's still nice to have those two Mondays, but I mean-
When I first started on the board, I think the planning board met on a Wednesday or a Thursday.
Was it once or twice? Was it always twice a month? I guess that's what I'm saying, is-
That goes way back, Greg. That's back in nineteen-
I don't remember, I don't remember that.
Nineteen ninety. It was, it was another day, and I couldn't, you know-
I remember coming here at seven o'clock and being here till like eleven, eleven-thirty.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Ever since, ever since you've probably been on, we've had, we've had big ones before, so, anyway.
Big meetings, when I started, I think it started until midnight.
Ash, Ashwood's Hill was, was midnight.
Anyway. Let's, let's-
Absolutely.
Let's get at least six of us here. Let's get Christine and Norman here, and we can discuss it. I, I prefer Monday nights. I always have. But I thought the second and fourth were the better ones. We've only missed a couple meetings because of holidays usually, just a couple.
Columbus Day.
Columbus Day tended to be the only one, right?
Sometimes Memorial Day.
Anyway.
Well, whatever day and time, we'll, we'll be here.
Yeah.
Okay. Plus, they're broadcasting more and more meetings all the time, you know? Board of Health never used to be broadcast. Now they're being broadcast. Before you know it, the Conservation Commission, they should be broadcast too.
Absolutely. Can I also just say that, that the new format with the videos and everything is amazing. I think they do an amazing job. I like it.
Yeah, no, no, they're doing a good job. I mean-
I'm round-nosing anybody. If you, if you're listening, I think it's just, I, I think it's awesome. YouTube videos are clear and crisp, and they move around, and I like it.
No, they, they are good. They're organized. They're organized by day and everything else, so.
I like them much better than I like that locust map on that first day in.
I hear you. I heard that already. Yes.
I don't want to dwell on them though.
Okay.
Is that it?
That's it.
Is that it?
That's all.
Make a motion, we adjut.
Second.
Second by Roger. All voting in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Who's the clerk? Who's the clerk now?
Good norm.
By the way, Tony, those that have had the date-